Order at six oh three. Gary, can you take the roll?
Scott Fischel.
Here.
Dennis Keeney.
Here.
Denise Brewster.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Lori Kornisky.
Here.
Stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome everyone. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participa- participation section of the agenda. Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes for June 26th, July 1st, July 7th, and July 10th. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Gary, can you take the roll?
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Lori Kornisky.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye. Motion carried. Make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 15th, 2025 special meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Gary, can you take the roll?
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Lori Kornisky.
Stane.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of the minutes for July 17th. I make a motion to approve minutes from the July 17th, 2025 special meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Gary, can you take the roll?
Belinda Grassi.
Epstein.
Lori Kornisky.
Epstein.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Motion carried. Resolution recognizing the 2025 Division Two Girls Championship softball players and coaches. They are here. Congratulations, great job.
So I have, would you like to read that or would you like me to read it?
Oh, I'll read it. Okay, recognition of 2025 Riverside High School softball Division Two state champions. Whereas, the Riverside High School softball team competed with exceptional skill, determination, and sportsmanship in the 2025 OHSAA Division Two State Title Tournament. And whereas, our team finished the season with a record of 27 wins and four losses and whereas, through hard work, dedication, exceptional skill, and collaborative effort, our team advanced through the sectional, district, regional, and state levels of competition to earn the highly esteemed title of 2025 Division Two State Champions by beating Mount Vernon High School eight to six on Sunday, June 8th, 2025. And whereas, our players, coaches, and team staff exemplified excellence, resilience, and school spirit, bringing pride to their school, families, and the entire Riverside community and the first softball championship to Lake County. And whereas, the accomplishments of our student athletes serve as an inspiration to younger students because they have set a standard for athletic excellence while excelling academically as Riverside High School students. And whereas, it is both fitting and important for the Board of Education to formally honor and commemorate this extraordinary achievement of the Riverside High School softball team. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Riverside Local School District Board of Education, this day of July 24th, 2025, does hereby proclaim the Riverside High School softball team as the 2025 Division Two State Champion- State Softball Champions, recognizing their outstanding accomplishments and extending its gratitude and congratulations, signed by the board members. Coach?
We have, uh...
So we have members of, I think all the coaching staff is here as well as members of the team.
Coach Binks here, yep, and we have, come on up, ladies.
Share a few words about the season and the journey and kind of all of that.
Them or me? No, it was a lot of fun and, you know, the best part about this whole journey was the community coming. Like, it was amazing by the time we got to the state final four to see how many people, the stands were packed, and we got to see other games with some other teams that just didn't have quite the support that we had. And by the time you got to this game and the game the next day for the state championship, just seeing people that we hadn't seen in 10 years coming to these events, the community coming out, the outpouring when we came back here, the fire trucks, the police cars, all that stuff that we got to do when we got back here, including the celebration afterwards, the banner. It's been nothing but a first rate by everybody involved and we can't thank everybody enough. Ladies, anybody want to say anything? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Here, does it hold out in the middle?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All the hierarchies and stuff. Thank you, everybody.
So that's a recognition, 75 years in the making, I guess.
It's a long time coming. Thank you for that.
They've been doing a lot of, a lot of significant media coverage. Their captains recognized them on Tuesday night. Next Tuesday is the Guardians game, correct?
Yes.
So they're going to the Guardians game. We recognize their next Tuesday night as well as Concord and both Painzotanji did individual recognitions as well. We already did as well, so, yeah. It's been a summer full of accolades for them.
So our summer break starts after?
Nice try. It's been awesome. So great. So congratulations again. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That was, that's my favorite special report ever. Next one, hand it over to Roger Raci of RFC for a construction update.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's been a while since, probably a couple of months. I just wanted to come up and give you a little bit of an update. Both projects are underway. As you could see, we have done all the earthwork. That's all been completed. We were very happy to not run into any bad soil on either one of the job sites. We were worried about a little bit on River View might run into some unsuitable soils that would have resulted in to add cost, but we didn't. We're out of the ground. We're laying block on both projects. So I think any, any issues with soil are behind us at this point in time. We're still working on some utilities on the River View site, but both sites are up to grade, up to subgrade, and then, as you could see, we have block going on. Right now, we're, we're not anticipating any delays as far as construction. Hopefully the weather cooperates with us for the next few months to get us to on the roof, and then we can work on the finishes at that point in time. Couple of things that I wanted to mention. When we first came here and you hired us, I told you that we, we were gonna figure it out, try and save you some money on the project one way or another. We're gonna work diligently on it. And as I talked to Mr. Fischel and the, at the GMP stage, when we submitted it, we told you guys that we're gonna still work on improving on that number. So I could tell you that through working with Cleveland Construction, there's subcontractors through some of the scope of work that we were, we have worked on and through some negotiations. To date, we have saved on the CTE project about $200,000 and about $250 on the River View project. Now those, that, those dollars were going to the owner's contingency because we did not have an owner's contingency going into the project. We only have the contractor's contingency. So at this point in time, those are gonna go into the contingency. I'll give you updates as we go along. There is gonna be some things that are gonna come up that we're gonna have to use some of that contingency, but at some point in time, at probably somewhere around 75% completion of the project, we will give you an update as to where those dollars and cents are, and then you can decide if there is some things you want to add to the project or where, how do you want to spend that, that money. At the end of the project, if it's not spent, it'll all come back. It'll be issued as a deductive change order to your GMP to reduce the total cost of, of the, of the projects. So that's kind of what I wanted to update you on. I'll take any questions, if you have any regarding the project or the, the status, the finances, anything that you'd like to know about.
I would just like to add a big thank you for doing your job and what a great job you're doing. There's already $450,000 of money that you've saved us because of the work you do, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. One thing I did want to mention, we, just, Gary and I were talking before, we do have a third-party inspection company that's doing inspections on the earthwork, the concrete, the masonry. They'll do it on the steel, and we've been receiving all the reports from them. And to date, we have not had any, any issues with any, any of those reports. We had one, one low concrete break on a small section of the footer, but this was at seven days. The 28 days is, is looking better, so we're not gonna have any issues. Those reports will all be compiled into, saved and emailed at the end of the project for your records. We have to also email them to the county for their records as part of the Ohio Basic Building Code. Now, that's a requirement to have a third-party inspector, inspection on the earthwork, concrete, masonry, and steel. And we, we get copies of it. The administration gets, gets copies of it. The design team gets a copy of it as well as the contractor. So we all look at it. If there's anything that comes up, we'll definitely keep you up to date and let you know.
Yeah, I'd just like to mention, occasionally I do stop by each site and talk to the foreman there, superintendents, and observe the work, and everything is going very smoothly from what I could see. So I appreciate all the efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else? Okay. Thank you.
I have one more, and it's the third in a, I think it's three-part series of a PAFAD Excellence, which is the comprehensive plan to increase student achievement. So we've talked about what student achievement looks like, high-quality assessments, the instructional framework, the rigorous curriculum went into it, and instructional rounds which looks at that rigorous curriculum. Today, we're gonna talk about the last two major pieces, which are MTSS and college and career readiness. When you talk about MTSS, we throw a lot of acronyms around education. MTSS is a multi-tiered system of support. The premise is if we identify struggling learners early, we provide targeted support, we prevent, and monitoring of that support, we prevent and we lead to greater student success within the general education classroom. We want to make sure that we are teaching the 80% of what our, the expected grade level is, or 80% of, you know, mastery. So the core principles are that, that early intervention works best. So when we have and provide early intervention and identify early with appropriate assessments, those high-quality assessments, which we talked about previously, we see a 40% reduction in special education needs, and we see higher graduation rates at the end because the students have success early in school that they tend to continue on in school and have success throughout school. We also use real-time data. Anyone who knows me knows that I'm a data nerd, and I like to use data along the way. We use data and we use data to drive the decisions we make educationally for kids. And MTSS is a formalized process where our teachers meet regularly, look at that data, and use that data, not just how it feels. Yeah, it feels like they're learning, though. This is the data that shows that they're learning, and it increases math and reading proficiency by up to 20% throughout the year. So we put these interventions in place, we monitor these interventions along the way, and then we assess them at a midpoint to see are they really making gains, and if they're not, we try new or more intense interventions. It, it works on a continuous improvement cycle, so it never ends. It's never, we're never ever done. We, we identify, we analyze, we implement, then we, we evaluate. Then we go back again and we analyze and we implement and we evaluate. We identify one, we continue to identify others who kind of tend to struggle or may have slipped a little bit for whatever reasons. It, it is not purely an academic support. It's academic and behavior. So it's under the umbrella of both academics and behaviors, and we provide research-based interventions within progress monitoring. Our coaches have been critical in implementing this process and providing these interventions as well as our Caitlin, Caitlin Collier, who is our student support supervisor, our special education supervisor, really works with MTSS, have really been critical in planning this in our buildings, and it is, it is up the ground, and we are, we use a program called Branching Minds to work and kind of have all this data in one spot, and then progress monitor along the way. So it's a, it's a fantastic process. When you look at kind of what it is in a graphic, tier one is at the top of this graphic, and tier one is that, that's that classroom instruction. That's where we're hitting 80%. We're working to get 80% mastery for all students. That's both in terms of content mastery and behavior goals, kind of where we're at. If we see that for the next 15%, we give some targeted intervention in tier two, in those tier two. So those are for some of the students who require more based on the assessments that come up. Tier three interventions are those interventions for the top 5%. And that's when we start to look at identification of special needs, IEPs, that sort of thing. We, again, real-time data drives the whole process, and it's focused on that early intervention and continuous intervention and catching it early and often. And that's kind of where MTSS is. So any questions on MTSS before we move on to the last one? Good with that, alright. Good day. The last one is one that we've really built on a lot. It is college and career readiness. This is a, it's a slide from the infographic on. Again, all this is on our website. We want to be very, but it's our, it's our career exploration and experience activity. So what are we doing with college and career readiness? We are preparing students for their future, not our past. And it really is, what do careers look like? And one of the things we're, we are bringing in next year is Lakeland and RHS. Next year, we are gonna offer 31 hours of Lakeland Community College credit on campus. Typically, our students will either take classes online. The online experience is not as great as an in-person experience. We're gonna offer these classes in person, whether they're taught by a Lakeland instructor or whether they're taught by a Riverside instructor who's credentialed. We are working more and more to get a Riverside teacher's credential to teach these Lakeland classes and really expand them. And we're looking at doing more than Lakeland in the future. We're gonna work, partner with Lake Erie to do some other classes as well. But it really started, it starts with Lakeland, the 31 hours there. Another thing we're doing is we're offering career electives, and this is the, the brainchild of Dr. Malacher, coming out, really, it, it... These courses are ones that kind of introduce students to what career paths are. We talk a lot about trying to, you know, I want to go be an engineer. What does it mean to be an engineer? Well, this is a way that kind of we have these career paths that show you what that looks like. So if I want to go into education, we have a course for people who want to be in education. You get to work with students in a different setting because your, your experience as a student in a high school is very different than your experience as a teacher in the same high school. Often, we hire a lot of alumni back. We're hiring some tonight. One of the first things they say when the principal, "Oh, where these kids weren't like that when I was here?" Well, they were. You just didn't hang out with them. So things have changed a little bit, and then the school doesn't. So it's, it is to really offer them what the experience looks like. We offer, we're offering a transportation and flight class next year where students are gonna be drone certified. We offer our carpentry class, which, once that CTE building is, is built, they'll be able to build really cool structures in and outside the building, not in a math classroom, in other places. We are looking to expand it. We offer welding in our state-of-the-art welding lab. We offer the, the medical class, which is touted by UH. I've heard the UH president speak, not knowing I was in the audience, and actually touted the partnership with Riverside and how they have this course where Riverside students visit every Friday to try, to look at different careers in the medical, medical. So something really proud of. Expanding on that and coming out of our business advisories next year is the pilot of the Capstone Project and really looking at what that looks like. And that's a 250-hour experience with a mentorship with a student who wants to, I may have taken a career elective, or I really know I want to be an engineer, so we're gonna partner them with an engineer, and they're gonna go do 250 hours on-the-job experience. We are piling what that looks like, and it really is the ultimate in personalized learning. We're, we're gonna work some leadership skills in there, some basic career skills, but it's going to be, the student is gonna come up with a proposal, and we're gonna say, well, this proposal gets you a half a credit. This one gets you a full credit. This is what it looks like along the way to kind of pilot that through. And it really kind of things that we're super excited about. We also have our traditional CCP. We have our AP classes and continue to expand on our AP classes and excel on our AP scores. Our AP scores are continuing to rise. We monitor that as well. So that's, that's kind of career exploration. That's the one that we're really pushing and that really burnt, expanded at the high school, and we're really excited about what a high school experience looks like. It does not look like the same as it did 10 years ago, and it's very personalized, and it is the crux of personalized, and to get kids when they graduate, they're ready to go take on the world and be successful, whether it's the military, whether it's the trades, or whether it's college. They're, they're gonna leave and not just say have a diploma now, like, no, they know what they're doing, and they're ready to go. And they may have two or three options. So it's kind of neat to, it's neat to see. So any questions?
Can you share some of the different companies and entities that showed up to work with the Capstone Project with the students?
Oh, I wasn't here that day. I don't, I wasn't here when we did that meeting.
We, I, there was Ohio State Fair was there, Ohio State was there, the career place was there.
Extension Office.
Extension Office was there.
Metro Parks.
Metro Parks were there. We had, um...
Was somebody from UH there?
UH was there.
Yeah, because we have a good partnership with, um...
I have a list.
To have, I don't remember because I wasn't there that time.
It was a packed house. I think we have, like, 13 doing it next year.
Yes, we have.
We had 1922 Coffee Shop.
The Coffee Shop.
That's right, yes. Well, you should skip the list.
It was University Hospitals, Cleveland Construction, Lake Metro Parks, OSU Extension Office, and 1922 Coffee Shop.
And, yeah, Cleveland Construction is another one I'm really excited about doing it. And then, our college and, our seniors who do the career electives typically do their, their senior projects, which is a much shorter project in the, in the career that they did the course with. So it's kind of neat to see. We had some ACT II students who did their thing with the Playhouse where they did, they liked fashion, so they did the fashion designs for Fiddler on the Roof. I saw some who did construction. They were working with various construction companies for a couple of weeks to kind of get that. I think it led to summer jobs even. So it was a really neat kind of in the career graph. That concludes my special reports.
Thank you for that. Discussion of old business. Does anyone have any old business?
Yeah. So I had sent an email out last night or the day before in regards to the work that LLB Resources is doing for us. I guess where I want to start is that, you know, the contract with LLB is with the entire Board of Education, not with just one member, and I want to make sure that any materials that are developed with them, they are being shared with the entire Board. According to the invoices and approximately $4,500 worth of work that's been done, there should be some deliverables that have been shared with the Board. I had asked if anybody had those, that they would please provide them to us via email, so we had electronic copies. I know the administration does not have them, so I don't know if any of the Board members have copies of these materials.
Do you have any copies?
No.
I do not.
You?
No.
Belinda, do you have any? I don't have.
Alright, so I will reach out to them directly and ask for them because according to the invoices, they've been developed. There's been a communication plan developed. There's been consultation with team and brainstorming. Email templates developed, Brennan test emails. We're not even sure what they're testing. So if nobody on the Board has knowledge of that, I think it's important that we do. And so I spoke to Dan McIntyre, our legal resource, and he said that I can just reach out directly. So otherwise, I'm not sure what we're being billed for. No one's seen the material.
Can I, can I ask you a question? Any of the emails that are going to, I don't know, they're, they're developing an email list, correct?
According to this, and Mr. Carebry, I think you had one conversation where they said they were developing an email list?
She said she was in the process of acquiring 27,000 emails.
Via purchase, I'm assuming?
I don't know. She didn't go into detail. That was back in May. I have not seen any emails or any...
Can I ask a question of our administration? Any of the emails that would, any email that would be sent? Would we see that in advance? Are we sending those from district servers, district email address sending? I'm curious, like, what that looks like.
Would we send an, would we send an email out?
I don't know, like, right?
To, to the district that usually runs through Nick. Mr. Carebry, he actually sends it out from, from the administrative system.
Is that the goal of this? Since we haven't seen the plan, I'm...
So I had mentioned to her that if she were to send me a CSV file with all the email addresses, I can upload that onto the parent system we use.
Are we, would we be mixing it from...
It would be a separate list.
Okay.
Which theoretically, if she's purchasing emails or acquiring emails from everyone in the district, it have, the parent emails we already have would be part of that 27,000.
Okay. Just from the information that you had forwarded via email in response to Mrs. Kornisky's request, I, at least I took from it that there were test emails that had been sent, that there had been something that had been sent. I don't know that...
She never clarified. I, like I said, I had mentioned to her that if she sends me a file, I can upload it on my system. I don't know if she's using a different system or because she had mentioned designing templates.
Wouldn't that be problematic to be sending things for district communication not coming from the district?
Why would it be problematic?
I don't know. I'm asking our administrators.
We have not had that come up yet. All the communications that we have sent have come through, have come through our communications manager. I, my understanding was the, this work was to come up with that email list and that scope of list, and then for us to send out and to push out to all parents as we were trying to reach more with our communications than just the parents that we had with the community members.
And I also understand that part of our contract, when we finally approved a contract, was that we would own whatever was produced, and I'm pretty sure by some of the communication that you had sent that that wasn't gonna be the case. That also concerns me.
There are some follow-up questions. I did talk to Mr. McIntyre about that also. He explained that if they are purchased or licensed, there's two different options. And so when I, when I reach out, I will get clarification on that, so we understand. I just want to point out, it says April 23rd, there was a team call to discuss community strategy that took two hours, um, a communication strategy. Again, the entire Board hasn't even talked about this. I don't, I don't believe the administration, from what I'm getting, has had too much discussion. On May 4th, there was designed communication plan, reviewed RS emails, I'm not sure what that is, website and social media account. On May 5th, call with team to review first draft of CP or communication plan. I'm not sure who the team is. Phone consultation with Scott Fischel to ensure accuracy of communication plan. Again, we've never seen the plan, so I think it's very important that we do get those materials as a board so that we can comment on them. Organize and tidy data list for purchase Riverside District contact list. Charge for that. On June 2025, it's brainstorming calls and LLB team meetings. I'm not sure who we're brainstorming with. Again, never been discussed at this table, to discuss an action plan. So I'm not sure what the action plan is for messaging email campaigns, collaboration with LLB's team to create email template. I don't believe our administration or any of the Board members, unless somebody wants to say they have, has collaborated. We've researched and creation of daily emails based on school board meetings and activities. Ensure accuracy of information with school board president. Run test emails to ensure end-user engagement. So again, all this work's been done, and we've been billed and charged for it, but none of that has come back to the Board. So I'll ask tomorrow when I reach out, since nobody seems to have that information here, so that we can find out what we're being charged for.
Anything else for old business? Thank you for that. Discussion of new business. Does anyone have new business?
I, I don't know where this falls. So I have two things, and this might be old business, I don't know because it's approved, but in regards to the flags and the plate, display policies, that I was unable to attend the meeting because it was called two days advance. You know, so I had a lot of questions. We also had a property meeting, or I'm sorry, a policy meeting scheduled for this Monday, that we would have had a chance to have some of this discussion if it wasn't put on the agenda on Thursday versus allowing us to have Monday's meeting and put on the agenda for tonight. I do have questions about the policy and how we're going to enforce it or what we're going to enforce. So I don't know if any of that discussion has happened since it was approved. Has anybody talked about what we're enforcing or what we're doing with this flag policy?
Well, it's a simple flag policy. It's a legal document, basically, so you would want to talk with our Board Attorney about that.
He told me I could talk to you guys. I did talk to him today.
Okay.
So for instance, our football team, they run out onto the field with a thin blue line flag. Is that acceptable now or not acceptable?
You'd have to ask Dan McIntyre that.
So we don't know how this is going to be implemented or how we're going to enforce this.
I think it's self-identifiable.
It's not because I'm asking the question and I'm not getting the answers.
Okay, it's, it's self-identifiable.
So it's a thin blue line? So is a thin blue line flag allowed?
It would be a legal answer for our Board Attorney.
Is our thin blue, if it's self-identifiable, then tell me, is it allowed?
You would have to ask our Board Attorney.
Who initiated the submission of this policy in the first place? I don't believe it was our attorney who designed the policy in the first place. And do we have administrative guidelines that go behind it? Because generally speaking, when we pass policy, we also have administrative guidelines that go so that we know how to enforce the policy.
We would have talked about that in our Monday policy meeting. And again, that's what that meeting is for.
So I was the one that brought it forth and our Board Attorney is the one who made the appropriate changes in it to make it the document that he thought would stand up legally. And so if you have any questions about it, I would just suggest you ask him. And if you want to have a further discussion about it, we can do that. But he's going to be able to answer those questions better than any.
So what was the purpose of the policy?
Well, we're under, we're all United States Americans and everyone is underneath the United States flag. There's a thousand other flags out there. And so we wanted to make sure that everyone's unified in this district underneath the United States flag. And of course, the outflow from that would be military flags, Ohio State flag, and a Riverside flag. And if you have a visiting team, their school flag. So it's a very, very simple policy. It just brings everyone together underneath one flag.
So I don't know that I got that from reading the policy. What I got was a list of items, but it didn't say what we were going to do with that list of items. It just listed the items. So that led me to not really understand what that policy was for. And again, if we already have a flag policy and a policy on display of patriotic information.
So have you read the other flag policy?
I did.
And do you know what it says?
I do. It outlines the type of display that we can have. This policy didn't say anything. The one that was proposed said, just gave a list of items.
So the other flag policy is a matter of law. We have to have that policy because the state of Ohio requires us to have that policy. So that's law. And what that policy is, is it describes how you can display the flag, how another flag can't be in front of it, and it can't be lower than other flags and so on and so forth. And that's just a legal document from the state of Ohio that we are required to have as a policy. So this other flag just brings everyone underneath the United States flag. It's very simple. We all want to be underneath one flag, one unified purpose, United States of America, underneath the United States flag. It's real simple.
So I would like to ask again, what does the policy tell us we can or cannot do? So to Mrs. Kreniski's question.
Yep, you can read it.
Can the football team come out on the field with their flag that they bring out with them? Is that acceptable according to this policy or not? We don't have any administrative guidelines to go behind it. So there's a lot of things subject to interpretation. No, I'm asking you because you wanted to have that policy put forth, so I am asking you.
Yeah, you can ask the Board Attorney.
So I did ask the Board Attorney, just to say, and we are not allowed to have the thin blue line flag brought out onto the field per this policy. So that's one thing. But again, I think we need to explain the expectations to our Board, to the administration of what we expect and how they're going to enforce this. And that has to come from the Board. That's not going to come from our attorney. He will guide us, but it's not going to come from him. So I guess I would ask, and I'll bring it back next month, for us to think about, does a policy clearly define which displays are appropriate and which are not? Are there any gaps or ambiguities? How should the district handle requests to display symbols not explicitly mentioned in the policy? What process should administrators follow to approve or deny proposed displays? How do we ensure consistent enforcement of this policy across all schools and buildings? Should the Board consider updating the policy to explicitly address electronic displays or social media? I even question, and I don't know if we've asked, but all the banners that we have along.
We did.
Okay.
And said we were okay.
We're good with those? Okay.
It's covered in us.
District of Public Advertising.
Yeah.
All right. So again, I think the Board needs to think about that. And it's probably worth, again, having a policy committee meeting so that we can discuss it and bring it to the Board, but everybody should have input into that.
Okay, great. And so let me ask you, Ms. Kreniski, you're the Chair of the Policy Committee? And how many policy meetings have we had this year?
We have them when the new policy comes out to discuss or when something like this comes up.
And how many have those been?
I don't know, Mr. Fishel. The point is, we had.
Zero?
Oh. Are you proud of yourself? But anyways.
So are you going to call a policy meeting?
I did call a policy meeting. It was scheduled for Monday to discuss this policy and to address these questions.
And are you having that meeting?
Well, no, because you already approved the policy on Thursday when everybody was not available. There were three Board members available to discuss it.
So let me understand. You're not having a policy meeting that you called, but you're going to schedule a policy meeting in the future?
Mr. Fishel, we scheduled a policy meeting to discuss the policy so that we could have a discussion at the table. You called a meeting two days in advance where two people were not available and approved the policy. There was no need to have the policy meeting on Monday. But now that we know that we don't know these answers to these questions, yes, I will call another policy meeting.
Okay, great. So you'll let us know when that meeting's going to be scheduled?
I let you know when the last one was, but that's okay.
So you will let us know?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The other question is, talking about scheduling meetings, is the fact that recently there's been a lot of meetings scheduled when everybody cannot be available? And we need to discuss how as a Board that we will ensure we are all elected officials on this Board. There's not three elected officials, maybe four. There's five elected officials on this Board. And we need to make sure that we're having discussion about what needs to be constituted a special meeting, like the flag policy that could have waited until today? Or when can all the Board members be available? And that's not been happening. So I want to ask the Board, how can we ensure that we are working together and making sure that everybody can be available for Board meetings?
So when a Board meeting is called, sometimes there's a time sensitivity to that. And although your job schedule won't permit you to make some of the meetings, sometimes we still have to have the meeting.
Okay, it's my understanding that there was no.
Excuse me until I'm finished, okay? Thank you. And so when there's a time sensitivity to a meeting, it's absolutely necessary to have that meeting. And if all Board members can't make it, you still have to have the meeting. There's business to be taken care of in the district. And I know you had said that you changed jobs and you have a time constraint with your job and it's difficult for you to make certain times. So we will make every accommodation possible so you can make meetings and we'll do everything we can. But when there's something that's time sensitive, there would be nothing we can do.
So I'm just going to interject here. This was not time sensitive, number one. And number two, there was no communication at all asking if we could make a meeting on Thursday. There was, there was no communication. It came out, there was a meeting. There was a meeting request. I said, I can't attend a meeting on that date and I sent a message. That was the first I heard of a meeting. There was no asking or polling or nothing.
Last Tuesday morning's meeting, I confirmed with our attorney, was not a rush. We could have made some different arrangements for that one and I was asked him to reach out and I was told no. There was one in regards to construction that I actually reached out to Roger to discuss. He said again that there was no rush to that one. Each one of these has been displayed as a rush. And when I talk to the people that I'm told say they are a rush, I'm told they're not. So again, I'm asking, how can we as a Board work together to ensure? Mrs. Brewster would not like to be dismissed from a meeting. Mr. Keeney, I'm assuming you like to be at meetings? I do have a daytime job. And so when we schedule a 7:30 a.m. meeting that does not allow the public to come or a Board member to come, then we probably should do a little bit better. So I'm asking, how do we work together to make sure that gets done?
Well, the first question is, since you seem to have the most time constraints, when, what times of the day and what days can you meet?
Mr. Fishel, my calendar's all different. That's not the point. I'm asking what process? For instance, we used to send out doodle polls. Doodle polls to everybody so they could say, here's my times that I can meet. And then everybody would, we would look for the best time for everybody. Can we put that process in the place instead of saying, hey, there's a meeting Thursday, show up?
So the Board has been executing a lot of business. You know, in the last 10 months, we've done more than this Board's done in the last 20 years, okay? And sometimes you need to move along and take care of business and not to put a poll out and wait three weeks for a meeting. So I'm asking again, when are you normally available during the week?
Again, my schedule is different. I'm asking for a process so we can try to get the most people here at a meeting. You can push back, you can blame the history, you can blame whatever you want, Mr. Fishel. But this is about boardmanship and the way that you're behaving by not including everybody. You're excluding people.
I'm asking, when can you make it? Can you forward your schedule?
Forget it.
Because 7:30 in the morning, can you make 7:00 in the morning?
Mr. Fishel, my schedule is different every day of the week. That's what I'm saying. So if you have a meeting, you need to before say, it's going to be on the meeting in two days, send something out so you can talk to people. That's all I'm asking.
Would you like me to call you first to see when you're available?
Mr. Fishel, but you didn't call anyone.
Yeah, I'm done.
So to say, would you like me to call you first, that would be great, but you didn't call anyone at all.
All right, well, it doesn't look like we're getting anywhere.
No, there was no communication about a meeting. So.
Mrs. Brewster, can I ask, if we scheduled a meeting without me four times, how would you feel about it?
There were times when.
I'm asking, how would you feel?
And I actually made myself available when I was in Florida, visiting my great-granddaughter.
So if you had missed four meetings, how would you feel?
I pulled off the freeway.
How many, how would you feel? Well, I'm sorry, I have a daytime job.
But I also work and my job starts at 8:00, but I make up that time later in the day. And so I work around my schedule as best I can because I want to be available. I know on some of these agendas, there were staff approvals that needed to happen so we could move forward. And I think that it's important when we're doing hiring, because I've sat in on several of the, especially the administrative interviews, you want people to be approved and you, they also have to give notification. There are deadlines on when, you know, they have to let their district know. So we just try to work around those dates and then.
So you're going to avoid the question? I appreciate it.
I understood that there was some kind of deadline as far as notification regarding the treasure.
There wasn't. I talked to our attorney about it. So, thank you.
There was also no rush in passing a policy for flags. That was, that could have waited.
Okay, so thank you for that. Board of Education Committee and Liaison reports to Buildings and Grounds and the Superintendent's Business Advisory Council, which our Superintendent said we're taking the summer off.
Yes, correct.
So that's taking the summer off for that. And of course, when the kids come back, we'll reengage. Okay. We, at the Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Alessic informed us that all the fire systems were tested in the schools and all is good. The back floors were tested and tagged in all schools. Several failed the testing, but the repairs will be completed in several weeks. So that'll be taken care of. The sprinkler systems in the Field House, Riverview, and Parkside were tested and all passed. Fire extinguishers throughout the district were inspected and tagged. There is a senior parking space painting proposal and Mr. Hall offered a proposal. And it's going to be where kids are painting parking spaces, right?
Correct.
And we're also going to try to control kids parking in staff parking spaces, right?
Only Dr. Walkers.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm so busy trying to fix the blinds, which did nothing. You all look like angels.
So you've been kind enough to offer your space as an overflow space for kids.
Yes, I want it painted. I'll let the kids paint it. I want my stuff painted.
So it's going to be.
And I was told I can't. Literally it was just a no.
Okay, all right. So that's, so that will be going on and that'll be on the campus parking lot. Varsity softball field scoreboard, more info to come on that. We're looking at possibly acquiring a scoreboard. And as Nick very kindly stated, it's often a business deal, a collaboration to where we can get the scoreboard and the company supplying it. We'll sell advertising over time and of course, our costs will be cut on that. And then after it's paid for, we end up splitting the profits from those sales, correct? Okay, so we're looking into that right now and information will come. There was an approval for a purchase order, a request for approval for a purchase order for $41,000, $41,474 for Gem Service for an HVAC and controls contract for Parkside and Riverview. Previously, the contract was with Gardner and their renewal quote was for $44,000. It's about $2,500 higher. And we're looking at actually developing even, an even better relationship with Gem than we had before. So anyway, a lot of this is preventive and ongoing maintenance. The, we had CTE wing alternative. So we're building the CTE wing. Of course, thank you for acquiring the $2.5 million grant. And so we're adding about a million and a half to that. And with that, there is an opportunity to air condition the cafeteria and commons area and also the choir and band room. There was also.
Not the band room, just the choir.
Just the choir room, okay. Just the choir room. Okay, thank you for that. And then also, there was a quote given for the lecture room, but we're thinking that we're not going to do the lecture room just yet. So anyway, the costs are for the cafeteria and commons, $135,489.76. And the cost for the choir room is $56,551. And these add-ons to the CTE wing are things that make sense because with the construction going on right now, we're touching those areas and it would be less expensive for us to do this now than it would be to do it later. And so we had discussed that and Mr. Keeney was looking a little bit more into the details on that. And so we will probably be calling a special meeting if everyone can make it, hopefully. And we will approve that because of construction. We don't want the construction to slow down. So that meeting, as we talk about it, hopefully will be next week and we could talk about that later. Okay, so there was a dust unit that was used for carpentry and other things, right, Mr. Keeney?
In the wood shop.
In the wood shop. And the exhaust was throwing dust back into the wood shop, okay? That's being fixed and the motor's being replaced on the exhaust fan and that should be working properly after that work is completed. And then the last item that Mr. Alessic mentioned was the CTE in Riverview update. Everything is moving forward and of course, Roger gave us that update. And that's what I have for Buildings and Grounds. Policy Committee?
Do you want to hit Curriculum and Programming first?
Curriculum.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you for that. Curriculum?
All right, on the Curriculum and Programming Committee, we did not have a meeting this month, but we are meeting on August 14th at 7:30 a.m. And so we will be discussing current business, primarily, you know, start school. We're continuing to review our test data. It's not finalized yet. And we'll also be talking about, a little bit about professional development. And then also, as far as the Buckeye Elementary Ed-Hoc Committee, that pretty much is completed because Ryan Schmidt from Then Design just took the ideas from, you know, what that committee came up with. And he's incorporating all of that into a final design.
There's a two-step process. As far as the addition, what that looks like, that was pretty much finalized before the end of the year. But there's also considerations for what the inside of the existing building looks like. When we go in the following summer, what rooms might be divided, making appropriate space for support services, not using spaces that could be given back to, you know, staff to have a proper bathroom, rather than use a bathroom that's located in the kitchen. Maybe relocating the sensory room, that was another consideration. So that's all still in discussion. And then I am following up with Ryan Schmidt regarding a playground. It's my understanding that the existing play apparatus that's out there is going to be in the fenced area. It's an older piece of equipment, it's not advised to move it. It's not cost effective to do so. And then you come under all these regulations, and by the time you add the money, you just go new. So he is talking with the rep, and we're trying to find something that, to replace that. And the location would be behind the library. But that won't be the final overall playground because there'll be other things that are gonna be added closer to the building because we are going to be going into an area where they had a basketball court, even though the surface isn't the greatest, there, there will be eventually an area that's blacktop once the construction is done for basketball. There's plans to develop some more of the field in the back, and there's gonna be some grading off and some drainage so that that's not too wet. And we're gonna try to keep the ball field that's there intact so that the kids can still do that. So we're, I just wanna make sure that we're not taking away an area where they can have a playground during construction. And then as far as the Strategic Plan Liaison, you know, we pretty much were working on the Pathway to Excellence, and Dr. Rotino has done a great job in segments covering all that. And I think that's about it. You know, we, we are monitoring enrollment and things like that, that kinda comes under several headings. We do have one less kindergarten section at Buckeye, one at Riverview, correct? With the numbers, and they're pretty much holding out.
Well, we have, Stan, we have four Riverview, one less one at Riverview.
Yeah. And. Right, and we, you know, encourage families to please sign up, don't wait till the last minute so we can appropriately plan space because some class sizes are right there, and if they, we get a few more registrations, they might go to another section. So we, we have several that are on watch, okay?
Can I, can I ask one quick question? Because you've mentioned the playground equipment at Buckeye quite frequently. Didn't the parent organization at Buckeye purchase that playground equipment some years ago? Not too, not too, too long ago, and they did all the installation work, if I'm not mistaken. Has any conversation been had with them about their playground equipment that they had purchased? I realize it turns over to the, to the school when they donate it, but it may be nice to at least have a conversation with them if they did that, Dr. Rotino?
I will look, I do not know the answer to that, oh, that was before my time, I will give it up.
It may have been while you were also, right? Like, I just don't remember exactly when that was.
I will see if I can find the answers.
I do remember that, though, so.
Well, that's fine, but, you know, the newer one, because the story was told about, you know, getting, when Beachwood put in their brand-new multimillion-dollar playground, they donated some nice equipment to a school, but by the time they had to go through A through Z on making it compliant and doing everything, they could have bought a whole new piece of equipment. I don't know if you have anything else to, you know, say about that, Mr. Alessic? Because we discussed it in Buckeye Committee about salvaging or using that piece of equipment.
Trying to salvage playground equipment is a liability. If you say you moved something, put it back, it fails, that becomes a liability.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Policy and Alumni?
As mentioned, we had a Policy Committee meeting scheduled for July twenty-first to discuss the policy that was approved prior to that, so it was canceled. So no other policy updates. Alumni Association, they had their golf outing, and they felt it was successful. They're still pulling all their numbers together to figure out how much money they earned. And they are in full planning mode for the Alumni Association Hall of Fame Dinner, which is on October eighteenth. That is it.
Thank you for that, Booster?
I don't have any current updates, but I am going to ask that the individuals who are in charge of the different PTOs, PTAs, parent organizations, and booster groups, if they can let me know who's now in charge of those. I don't know if you have a list currently, Nick, of the people who are in charge for the coming year. Right, so if they can reach out to me and let me know who is in charge of those organizations now, because I have old lists from last year, that would be helpful for me. And just a note out to the band boosters, please give me an email, or send me a message, or text, or call, because, you know, I like to work concessions, so I'm looking to get on your list.
Okay, thank you for that, Superintendent's Report?
Yes, thank you. Couple of different items today, first of all, in our, there I am. In our crowd tonight, Dr. Stephen Thompson is our new Treasurer and CFO, and he is here, so I wanna welcome him to the district and to the family, so welcome, Dr. Thompson.
First, Stan?
I am.
So thank you, and of course, thank you for choosing Riverside and joining our Riverside team. We really appreciate that.
Also, one prior approved and one on the agenda tonight, so why, well, bring the board attention to some new administrative hires. First of all, Courtney Patton is gonna be our, Courtney? So we're excited to welcome Courtney home, she's an alum, I don't remember what year you graduated.
Two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten, two thousand and ten alum. We got to bring her back as Riverside Campus AP, predominantly in John R. next year. And Mr. Tom Riley is a, gonna be the Parkside Elementary Principal, and Tom is in the back there. Tom has been at LaMoo forever and is embracing hugs now at Parkside. So we're really excited for that transition as well. This morning, Mrs. Aliff was really busy, although it doesn't look like that, but that's because she was in the lecture room with our job fair. We hosted the fourth annual Riverside Job Fair, and it was a great turnout. We had twenty-two applicants attend the event, seeking non-teaching and substitute teaching positions. We found a number of people who we've already, our director's already fighting over, who's gonna fill in the spot, as well as substitutes. And thanks for all who attended and to make it a great event. And it really was an awesome event to come in and see just all the people talking and wanting to be a part of the district in fellow's needed positions. So it was, it was great, so thanks to all who were involved with that. Some upcoming great community events, Meet the Teams Night, and I believe it's also the Band Showcase. The Fall Band Showcase is Wednesday, August twentieth. On the, in the Fieldhouse there, I think we're also gonna do another recognition of the softball team. I don't think the rings will be in at that, but we're gonna do a ring ceremony as well. As well as the Community Tailgate Party is August twenty-ninth. It's moving a little bit, and we're still finalizing the details of toward it. We think it's gonna be on a band practice field, is weather dependent, but it can't be where it typically is because of the construction back there. So we're gonna move the tailgate, but we're still gonna have it, and we're still gonna kick that off. And that is the second game of the season versus Green, I believe, that game. And finally, although they could not be here tonight, I wanted to wish a congratulations and a happy retirement to both Mrs. Cheryl Lanning, who's our Executive Director of Student Services, as well as Mr. Chuck Schlick, the Assistant Superintendent. They are rounding out their years, and they have one more week, seven days, to come to work. On behalf of the district and the board, we will be sending them with the standard drawings of the schools that are framed, suitable for framing, so they will receive one of those, each of them, as well. And I can say, just to speak personally about both of them, you don't get two better people. And although we did, you know, we, they're, they're irreplaceable. Cheryl's been in the district for twenty-six years, Chuck for twenty-two. Both of them always have done so much for this district in terms of growing us, getting us to where we are. And they are, they are Riverside, and they're who we are. So they are, they are definitely going to be missed. And August first, and that, come that Friday, a little feel like long weekend. I think the Monday might feel a little different for them. So, congratulations, and we wish them both the best. And last but not least, thank you and best wishes to Mr. Platko, our Treasurer, who is, this is his last board meeting. He is headed off to Orange to be the, to be the Treasurer. Thank you for all you've done in your nine years and ten years of perfect audits, and really advocating for kids and students along the way, and being creative in the way we solve some of our issues, through the good times and some of the not-so-good times, and kinda taking us out of that into where we are today. Thank you and best luck, and I believe Mr. Fisher has something to present to you.
We have a plaque in recognition and appreciation of your service and dedication to the Riverside Local School District, presented to Gary A. Platko, CPA, Treasurer, CFO. Thank you so much for your service, and the best in all your doing and your next endeavor.
Thank you.
You have to retire to get to picture of the school. And there is cake for everyone afterwards, if that concludes my report?
Okay, thank you for that. Treasurers, Treasurers reporting Committee update, Finance Audit and Personnel?
Okay, we held our meeting on July seventeenth. Once again, typical personnel updates, retirements, resignations, new hires, you know, advertising for new positions or open positions. You'll find a lot of that in the agenda. The Finance Board Agenda Review was, everything needs to be updated as of June thirtieth. And that's in the process of being done. Turnover of all necessary documents and resources and everything will transition from the old Treasurer to the new Treasurer, along with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five close. With the state budget, there was a few items that are still up in the air. I think one of those has been, item fifty-five, sixty-five, and sixty-six items. I think one of them has been, had the veto overridden, the other two are still out there pending resolution. There's a federal grant update that some grants have been frozen at this point. They relate to Title II, IV, and III, which regards professional development, safety, security, tech, et cetera, and English language. English language.
Learning thing, learners.
Learners, yeah, right, so it's, they have to, there's a lot of that going on there. So that'll get resolved somehow, or it won't, we'll see. There's been some new salary compensation with a three percent increase for certain personnel. Assistant Principal at Parkside, which was mentioned earlier, is coming on. Is an executive assistant secretary position, and long-term postings are also being done. And that concludes that report.
Thank you for that, update from the Treasurer?
All right, as always, we'll go through our monthly financial reports. So June twenty-twenty-five, June's our fiscal year end. As always, the reports are available in Board Docs and on the Treasurer's page on our website. The total cash balance for all of our funds are just shy of thirty-seven million dollars. The general fund balance was just over twenty million. The permanent improvement fund ended the year at seven point five million in cash, of which just shy of seven point four millions encumbered committed for our construction projects and other items, with a hundred and eight thousand left in the fund at the end of the fiscal year. For June, the revenue for the general fund was one point two million, which includes about six hundred thousand dollars in unrestricted state foundation payments, and just over four hundred thousand dollars in threshold cost reimbursement. That's an annual process we go through each year. We report students of higher cost that are special needs to the state, and they have a pool of money they distribute to each district. So our reimbursement was just over four hundred thousand, that's a little bit higher than it's been in recent years, which is good. Good as far as revenue perspective, but also means you're incurring more special ed costs if that number's going up as well. Interest revenue in June was about ninety-five thousand for the general fund, including four point four eight percent in Star Ohio, and our registry investment account giving about three point seven percent interest, so our overall yield about four point two. Expenditures for June, seven, just shy of seven point two million, that's higher than normal because we had the end of the year advance to the Career Tech Fund, which was about two point two million dollars advance, and then we had some transfers from other funds as well. We also, we transferred additional money to the Termination Benefits Fund because we have a lot of severances coming up out of this, this year. And those are, that money was set aside just to ensure that there was proposed cash balance limitation in, in the state budget. We wanna make sure that we kinda did that before the end of the fiscal year instead of doing it in July, which we typically do with that. Looking at where we came at the end of the fiscal year, comparing our May twenty-twenty-five forecast that was finalized in late April to where we ended the fiscal year. The first two lines, general property tax and public utility, personal property tax, those numbers were, were known in March, so there's no variance there. Our state funding unrestricted grants and aid came in point three six percent higher than expected. Restricted grants and aid came about sixty-nine thousand dollars, or ten percent higher. That was a little bit difficult to predict this year because of all the science reading reimbursements getting from the state for teachers for completing that training. So next fiscal year, those, those numbers will be smaller and be more predictable. State share of local property taxes at your homestead and rollback reimburseals from the state of Ohio came in point three four percent higher than we projected. And then the, all other operating revenues came in one hundred and seventy-one thousand higher than typical, about five point three percent higher, higher interest income, some Medicaid revenue in that line. And then all their financing resources, which includes the threshold cost reimbursement goes to that line, was about eleven percent higher. So overall, our revenue came in three hundred and fifty-one thousand higher than we, than we anticipated, or zero point six seven percent for this year. On the expenditure side, the salaries came in point four four percent higher than expected. Retirement benefits came in about two point eight eight percent lower, about three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars lower. Some of that's just due to, we didn't typically charge benefits to grant funds in prior years. We started doing it this year, reallocating some things around, so that number was a little bit difficult to predict this year, but still pretty close to being in line. Purchase services, about two hundred and seventeen thousand higher, or three percent higher than we expected. Supplies coming in just twenty-eight thousand higher, about one point four nine percent. But then capole came down, set it below. And then down at the bottom here, looking at transfers out, you know, as we said, we transferred additional money to the termination benefits funds. That decision was made after the forecast was finalized, so obviously, there's a larger variance there. But on the advances out, we didn't have to advance the full two point five million because we didn't finalize the furniture purchase, or the equipment purchase for the Career Tech Grant, so that advance was lowered. So when it all washes out, our expenditures ended up eighty-three thousand higher than expected, or zero point one five percent when you put it all together. Our cash balance is about one point three five percent higher than usual, so we ended the year just over twenty million. And we had a little bit higher outstanding encumbrages than normal. Half of that's due to money we're owed to the other school district for the CARES program, and we're finalizing that amount, so that was more than half of that number was for that. Looking at interest income for this year, on the left-hand side, we allocate interest out to various funds through the district. General fund, about one point one million, bond retirement fund, about ninety thousand, and we have some other miscellaneous funds, and then the permanent improvement fund, about three hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Total interest was about just shy of one point eight million. On the right-hand side, you can see the, the history there, you can see back in the early days, prior to my coming, interest rates were near zero. We didn't have very good cash balance at the time either, so interest was minimal to none. And then in two thousand and seventeen, when we passed the operating levy that got us back on our financial footing, and interest rates had gone up until COVID happened in twenty-twenty. So in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, you saw we dropped from three hundred and seven thousand down to thirty-four thousand. And then we all know rates have skyrocketed in recent years, so we've been averaging north of one point one million and one point eight million in those, in those recent years. State budget update, just to expand upon what Mr. Keeney was, was explaining. The, the House did vote on the veto override. That was the one to eliminate new emergency and substitute levies. There's a combined, you can do a combined income tax and property tax levy, and there was one other type that was also there. It was, it passed the House with sixty-one votes, it needed sixty to override, but it, it still has to go to the Senate to be considered, which has not been scheduled yet. Once the Senate approves that, it will go into effect about ninety days after that. The state legislature still had, they still have till December of twenty-twenty-six. If they were to override other vetoes, the other two that were up for consideration was including emergency and substitute levies in the twenty mil floor. They did not consider that one yet, but that one will probably happen at some point in the future, I'm projecting. Riverside only has one substitute levy of two point nine mils. We are on the twenty mil floor, so if that legislation passes, we'd include that in our twenty mil floor calculation. That would not lower anybody's taxes per se, it would just prevent future increases when values increase in the future. But, you know, we're only about a ten to fifteen percent increase away from being back on the twenty mil floor if there was no new levies, if that legislation was put into effect. Any other item that was, because veto override consideration that has not been voted on yet was to authorize the county budget commissions to roll back taxes for school districts and other entities. Basically, the county budget commissions, your county auditor, county treasurer, and county prosecutor. Jawa County does a lot of this currently, Lake County does not, pretty much, they've been told not to do anything, so there's been a lot of misunderstanding currently about what powers the budget commission has. We don't have this, the item that was vetoed was giving them that explicit power to do that. I imagine with eighty-eight counties, you'd have eighty-eight budget commissions doing eighty-eight different things, and I can see a lot of nuances if, if that was vetoed, if those were to be overturned. Lastly, just, it's, you know, being my last board meeting here, I just wanted to, you know, thank the board, and thank the central office administration, my staff, and the community for these past nine years. We've done a lot of good things in the last nine years, and I, I wanna just kinda highlight some of the things that we've done, because you look back, and I think we, we did a lot, and, you know, I'm proud of it. Didn't do it by myself, did it with, you know, help of everyone here, and, and Dr. Kales as well. When he was here, you know, we. know, we constructed two new elementary schools, Parkside and Riverview. We had the John R. Williams Gym converted to weight room. We had turf installed on our football field. We had an operating levy passed in 2017, which was the first new operating money since 2004. Allowed us to bring back transportation, lower our paid-to-participate fees, bring back elementary specials, eventually led to implementing free all-day tuition-free kindergarten for all students. We were able to do that. And then probably one of the, one of my proudest accomplishments was working with the sheriff's office to implement our school safety officer program, to have an officer in every building, which, you know, in Riverview this fall, you know, it really showed us the need for that, and, you know, the cost of that program, while it is costly, you can't put a price on safety. We also had, you know, a lot of grants over the years. We were able to do the Secure Vestibule Project on all our legacy buildings, so we have secure entrances at all four schools. And now we have the Career Tech Edition, hoping to come back when you guys do a ribbon breaking, ribbon cutting. They want to see what that looks like, when it's all said and done, and a lot of work has gone into that as well. And just wanted to say thank you, and I'm on my phone call wave if there's any questions or anything that comes up, because, you know, being here for nine years, a lot of knowledge up here that may not be in paper, and I can tell you a lot of funny stories, too, that's happened along the way as well. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Platko. Appreciate that. Appreciate your service. Okay, public comment. Anyone like to speak? Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to speak from the podium. Identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes.
Good evening, members of the Board, administrators, and fellow community members. My name is Jeanette Jones, and I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about how our district is using our permanent improvement funds. These funds were intended for long-term, meaningful investments in our schools. Please explain to me how we've gone from over $9 million in our PI fund to just under $80,000, all within one year. What happens when we drain the fund, and we need something in an emergency situation? What will be cut? Will it be busing again? Layoffs? Pay-to-play? Please tell me, because that is where we are headed. PI funds are not a blank check. They are taxpayer dollars. We, as a community, approve these levies in good faith, trusting they'd be used wisely to improve our schools for the next generation. We are witnessing an alarming amount of good administrators and good teachers leaving our district. When teachers no longer feel valued, heard, or given the tools they need, they will leave. It has become increasingly clear that the majority of our school board, the majority of our school board, is not acting in alignment with the will of the community in which it was elected to serve, time and time again. Community members have shown up at meetings like this to express our priorities, transparency, fiscal responsibility, and decisions that directly benefit students in classrooms. Yet those voices are being ignored. Whether it's the misuse of PI funds, the lack of accountability in spending, or decisions made behind closed doors, the board is not honoring the trusted place it had been by the people who funded, who fund and support this district. When input is repeatedly dismissed and community priorities are set aside, it sends a clear message. This board is not listening. Once trust is broken and credibility is lost, it's nearly impossible to get it back. That's why protecting your name, your character, should matter more than protecting a position or defending a poor decision. At the end of the day, your good name and your character are all you really have. Titles come and go. Budgets rise and fall. But your integrity, how you lead, how you treat people, how you stand when no one's watching, that's what defines you. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, just a correction. The permanent improvement fund is used for permanent improvements. Has nothing to do with busing, has nothing to do with salaries, has nothing to do with benefits or daily operations. Not a single dollar is being used from the general fund for the improvements that are being done. Also, it was a permanent improvement levy, which generates every year 2.7 to 2.8 million dollars. And then with the investments that the treasurer makes, we end up with about $3 million of usable dollars each year. So the money will be replenished and then be able to use for future projects. So it doesn't have anything to do with busing or cutting any programs.
So what happens when all that, all that money is gone?
We get more this next year, 3 million.
Okay, well, we've had, we had 9 million.
I know, so we're using it to create room. You know, I don't know if you're aware of this, but at Riverview, we were what's called minus three classrooms. It was overcrowded to the point of minus three classrooms. So we're building eight. So we'll be able to get those three classrooms back for normal use. And then also, there's 1,500 homes being built. All of those students go through Riverview for elementary. So that'll allow for space so that we don't have to buy trailers to put kids in. Okay? And then the CTE wing, we were able to get a $2.5 million grant. We're adding probably at this point a little over a million and a half to that for opportunities for the students. So I just want you to be aware of that. The general fund, not a single dollar is being touched.
But the special meetings that you guys have, is that, do you guys get paid for those every time there's a special meeting? Does that come out of the PI fund or the general? So when there's a special meeting?
So the board is paid out of the general fund.
So when there's a special meeting?
Yeah, yes. And so, just so you know, the big dollars we get is $125, only for a meeting. We are not paid for-
For a three-minute meeting?
We are not paid for committee meetings, okay? We're not paid for any other work we do. We're only paid for the meetings. So I just want to make you aware of that.
So you still get paid for the special meetings that are-
Yes, and thank you for your comments. We appreciate that.
There's a little bit more to it, but I don't think this is the right time to go into it. And I think if you have any other questions, just feel free to reach out to a board member.
Sure.
Okay, thank you for that. And we have a consent agenda, finance, and audit.
Was there any other public comment? I don't know that-
I'm not seeing anyone else that wants to speak. Do you have any other questions? Ms. Krenski?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda, finance, and audit.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the items listed A through Q on the finance audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? None heard. Please take the roll.
Laura Krenski?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda, personnel.
I'll make a motion to approve the items A through L listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Please take the roll.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Laura Krenski?
Aye.
If I can interrupt real quick.
Motion carried.
I'm sorry. Now, if I can interrupt real quick, we did just approve our head basketball coach, boys basketball coach, Matt Cardina, who is here with us tonight. Congratulations, Coach.
Okay. Consent agenda, curriculum, and programming.
I make a motion to approve the items A through C listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, Mr. Platko, will you take the roll?
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Laura Krenski?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda, buildings and grounds. Make a motion to approve the items listed above A and B. The buildings, grounds, operations, consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Gary, can you take the roll?
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Laura Krenski?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Motion carried. Board of Education, business, Crown of Akron bus undercoating. Resolution to approve a purchase order with Crown Akron for the undercoating of 50 school buses at a total cost of $18,125. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I just ask why this is not under the superintendent's recommendation or administrative recommendation section?
The first K and one came under Board of Ed business, so we kept it under there. Crown is the, this is an Akron company that's local that we reached out, so we get a quote. They are actually going to do a, they have newer equipment, so they're going to take them off-site and do it that way.
So did we approve a previous contract?
We did. We approved it with, the board approved it with Crown in our, our line.
Right. But what I'm saying is, do we need to disengage from that contract formally?
No. The way Kyle Hendry explained it to me was, they weren't going to do it. Per the vendor, they recommended we just do it through Akron, because it's closer. And because it was a change in vendor, the amount didn't change or anything, it's just the change in vendor that we-
So it's my understanding they're related companies. It's like a satellite, almost.
I believe, though, the one in Pennsylvania is the distributor.
Main distributor, right, right.
Yes.
So, okay, so-
This is being recommended by our administrative team?
This is a board item. Any other comments? Gary, can you take the roll?
Linda Grassi?
Nate.
Laura Krenski?
Nate.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Motion carried. Just as a side note, that should, over approximately 20 years, save the district about $6 million taking care of our buses. In the past, what had happened was, without treatments, the buses would rust out at about 12 years and almost be unusable or close to it. A five-year Canadian military study showed that you get a $6 return for every dollar you use in this treatment process. And so, we started that last year, and we're continuing it, and we would plan to continue this, this process to save the taxpayers' money. So anyway, a little info on that.
Just like that, too, just to note, there's no, I've read a bunch of different studies. There's no guarantee of that. I have asked our prior, so I'll ask again to make sure that we're taking a look at how our maintenance costs do decrease to prove out that this is working like they said it would, too. So kind of cost-benefit analysis at some point.
Thank you for that attention. And we have, any Board of Education updates?
Yes, I have something for Gary Platko. He can come over here and get it, and he needs to show the entire public what it is.
Can we do it after the meeting?
No, we have to do it right now.
You know, you have to do it now.
Sorry?
It's a bag of oranges. My daughter, she's like, you're not going to be a beaver anymore. You're going to be an orange. I'm like, well, they're the lions. They're not just-
I just want to say a hearty congratulations to Gary Platko. He has been an extreme asset to this district. There's not a whole lot else I can say about that. I will miss you. And to Cheryl Lanning and Chuck Schlick, who are not here, I will miss them as well.
Thank you for that. Next meeting announcement, finance and personnel, August 7th at 8:00 a.m. Curriculum and Programs Committee, August 14th, 7:30 a.m. Board of Education Meeting, August 14th, 6:00 p.m. And I make a motion to adjourn at 7:26 p.m. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Gary, can you call the roll?
Laura Krenski?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried. Have a great evening, everyone, and thank you for coming.